In just a few minutes, if we'd like to invite our colleagues out in the lobby to join us and to find a seat, we'll get started in just a moment. Good evening and welcome. We'll invite you to take a seat and to join us. Do we have many folks still in the lobby? Are we ready to get started? I've gotten a thumbs up. Wonderful. Well, good evening and welcome. We are thrilled to have you here this evening. On behalf of my colleagues, Dr. Michelle Harwellup from Wayne Westland, Monica Merritt, Poonah Canton, Pete Kula from Van Heerden Schools. We are thrilled to have you here this evening. We thank you for taking the time to be with us on this issue of great importance. We have the great privilege collectively of serving over 49,000 students across our four school districts. We also have the pleasure of partnering with 5,000 dedicated and caring staff members who work tirelessly on behalf of the students entrusted to us. If you are one of those staff members from one of our four districts, would you please stand and be recognized? I'd also like to take a moment and welcome our elected officials here this evening, our board members and any other elected officials. Would you please stand at this time and be recognized for your service? I would just like to make a special thank you to a few folks. Janet Sutherland, Katie Patterson, and Stacy Jenkins, who helped to put together all of the materials for this evening. A round of applause for them. Thank you so much. This evening, we will be welcoming three experts in the area of school finance. As you know, we pulled together this town hall meeting on school funding reform. We are just so privileged to have here with us this evening Phil Anderson from SEMCOG, Steve Zinkian, who is the Deputy Superintendent of Wayne County RISA, who is to be arriving shortly because, as usual, he is doing double duty this evening, perhaps triple duty. Dr. Randy Leopold, an eminent expert in school finance, a great advocate for children, and are Wayne County RISA Superintendent. You should have received on your way in an agenda. We'll go through three different presentations this evening. In between each, it will take just a few minutes for you to ask questions, share ideas. On the back of your agenda, you have an opportunity to jot down your thoughts, questions, and ideas as we go through that. So please utilize that. It will take a few minutes between each of the presentations for you to ask some clarified questions or to share any of your thoughts with us. This topic and this issue is of such great importance. It matters to all of us. So whether you are here as a parent who cares deeply about the education your child receives, wanting to make sure that their needs are met, whether you're an educator who continues to provide for the students entrusted to you with money out of your own pocket during a time of wage stagnation for many years that has affected all of our staff, whether you are a board member who would like to be talking about the pride and promise of our schools rather than revenue and reductions each year. This matters to all of us. It matters because strong schools make a strong community. So we are going to get started this evening. Bill Anderson is going to kick us off. And again, thank you for being here. This matters.
Good evening. First, I thought I'd give you a little background on why I got brought into this. I have been working with SEMCOG, Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, for about three and a half years now. I'm a specialist in local government financing and operations for SEMCOG. For those of you who may not be familiar with SEMCOG, if you've ever heard of Pro-Zone Action Days at SEMCOG, they're does the monitoring for those. If you're ever here right now, we're in the midst of Don't Fear for Dear. One of the reasons why we deal with that is we are the Federal Regional Transportation Forenary Agency. Prior to working for SEMCOG, I spent nearly 30 years working with the state legislature in one form or another. During the time that Proposal A passed, I was a policy advisor to Republican members of the House of Representatives, working with the local government tax policy committees during that time. Also, I spent about 12 and a half years on a local school board, and I was a township supervisor. So I've gotten around a little bit. One of the things that I want to do is present some materials that we were presenting to a group called the Metropolitan Affairs Coalition, talking about how schools are financed and kind of the evolution of financing of Michigan schools in Michigan. So, in the beginning, there was something called the Burzley Formula. This goes back just before Proposal A had passed. The Burzley Formula was the concept that the more that you taxed yourself, the more the state would help you in terms of funding schools. The basic concept was if you levied one mill of taxes, the state would guarantee that school district a certain amount of money per pupil when you levied that one mill. Let's just say it was $100. If you levied that one mill and those taxes brought in $50 to your school district, the state would make up the difference and send you $50 in order to get to that $100 amount. So obviously, the higher you raised your millage rate, the more money you could potentially bring in, and especially for many of the districts, the more money they could bring in from the state. Now, this became an issue as time went on. What happened in 1993, out of the 525 school districts in the state at the time, about 177 of them could generate more money than the state could put up and match. Those were called the out-of-formula districts. So those were the more affluent districts in the state. Others had something less than that. So, under the Burzley Formula, it encouraged millage increases. And this is the example I gave. You would go out and you would campaign to the citizens and say, "Look, if you raise your taxes for every dollar you pay, we're going to get another dollar from the state." That's a good deal. You pay one, we get two. Why wouldn't you go ahead and do that? The problem was Burzley clashed with something called the Headley Amendment. The Headley Amendment said that if property values went up, if they went up faster than the rate of inflation, they required the local school district to decrease their millage rate. But that's a problem because the state wanted to keep the millage rate up in order to get more money. As a result, most every school district in this state went to the polls every year and said, "Please return our millage rate back. If you don't, we actually lose money." And the citizens weren't particularly happy with that particular outcome. So, the result of the combination issues that we had was that we had a lot of school elections going on, and we had a lot of people upset with the schools because every single spring you had to go back to the polls and say, "Yes, we'll go ahead and override Headley, and we're going to pay more than inflationary increases in property taxes." What also happened is that a huge gap developed between the highest and the lowest school districts in this state in terms of the amount of money per pupil that we were funding. In fact, it was over-doubled between the highest and the lowest. Now, I will say the lowest spending school districts were generally the rural school districts. Does anybody remember the issue of Cal-Casca? Where Cal-Casca closed down the schools because they weren't going to a go-ahead and levied their property taxes that particular year. That kind of spurred on what was going on. But obviously, school funding was one part of the equation for Proposal A. The other one was property taxes, and how much property taxes we were paying overall. So, what people sometimes forget is that Proposal A was a culmination of probably over a decade of debate. You know, we talked about the legislature not getting things done today. Well, they weren't getting it done too quickly back then either. In fact, I was just at an event where former Governor Blanchard was in talking, and he was on a panel with former Governor Engler. And they asked, "What was your biggest disappointment being governor?" And his biggest disappointment, he said, was not being able to deal with property taxes during his term. Governor Engler said, "I'm glad you did because it made me governor." Proposal A was not just about funding schools. It was also about controlling property taxes. So it really had these two major components going on. At the time of Proposal A, Michigan had some of the highest property tax levies in the country. We were right up there with New Jersey, and it was pretty much nip and tug for many of those years who paid higher property taxes, Michigan or New Jersey. So, Proposal A, what did you... Well, I listened to that one night just before summer of 1993. Debbie Stabnow dared the legislature. She introduced an amendment and said, "We're going to lighten out all the property taxes for schools." Phone call went out between the then Senate Majority Leader, Dick Poschamis, and to Governor Engler. They said, "We got this amendment." And Governor Engler said, "Take it." That started a series of events that those next 12 months were probably the most interesting and busy months of my life working with the legislature. I still remember waking up the next morning because I worked for the House, and I heard the news, and I started shaking because I knew what had happened. And I didn't believe it was going to happen until I was listening to WJR, and I was hearing my Speaker of the House, Paul Hilligan, saying, "Well, we're going to ratify it today." And I knew things were going to change. So what did we do? We significantly reduced property taxes that go to pay for schools. Instead, we raised the sales tax by two cents on the dollar, and we dedicated all that money to schools. We also took additional revenue from the state income tax, put that into the school fund. We did levy the 18 mils on the non-homestead properties. So if you're a homeowner, you didn't have to pay the property taxes for the schools. If you're a business owner, or if you own that cabin up north, you had to pay an extra 18 mils on that property. We also increased taxes on tobacco products. We created at that time the highest tax on tobacco in the country. And we also added a real estate transfer tax that every time you sold your home, you had to end up paying about the equivalent of 15 mils on the sale of your property. Now, prior to Proposal A, about 70% of the school operating funds came from property taxes. After Proposal A, only 19% of the revenue used to operate schools came from property taxes. Now, when I say operate schools, I'm not including the bond village levy. And you notice the little asterisk that says local property taxes? What we all do pay is a six-mil state education tax, a state property tax that does go into schools. Now, what does it mean? In 2016, the sales and use tax generated $6.2 billion towards education. The income tax generated $2.5 billion for education. The state education tax, $1.86 billion. The lottery, remember everybody? What's the big question? Whatever happened to the lottery revenues? That generated $790 million for the operation of schools. $340 million for tobacco taxes and other taxes at the state level generated about $1.5 billion. It's a lot of money. It is a lot of money. Now, what was the impact of Proposal A? And this is a bit of the policy advisory coming out. Prior to Proposal A, local school boards and local voters controlled the revenues of the school district. Simply stated, when you went out and you asked for a millage, the local school boards and you, the voters, had that complete control over how much money was going to go to your school system. After Proposal A, the reality is the legislature controls how much money is going to go to each individual school district for each individual's child. The amount of money that is collected by the school district from those 18 mils, it doesn't change how much money the local school district is going to have for operational purposes. With rare exception, there are a few school districts in this state that spend over the amount of money that the state will give them. So they do have a little bit of control, and those are some of the school districts like Rose Point. Okay? But for the most part, it's the legislature that controls how much money is going to be available for each school district in this state. Now, what was the focus of Proposal A? The first focus was on bringing up the lowest-spending school districts in the state and start bringing up the bottom. Also, there was a limit on the yearly increases of the best-funded school districts in this state, so they couldn't run away from the pack, as they had been doing. They were getting further and further away with more and more money than the rest of the school districts. So the legislature put a cap on them. And actually, the lowest-funded districts were getting more per pupil each year than the best-funded districts. And on a percentage basis, a big difference in terms of what was going on. And the important thing was, what we really have to remember is, 1994 set everything in stone. That became the base upon which every increase since has been based. There was one school district in particular that got caught. Well, actually, there's two. The one I live in and the one I'm looking at over in the aisle over here. Wayne Westland got caught because in 1993, they did not have enough revenue to cover their expenditures, and that got frozen forever. So the legislature actually took care of your problem. They did take care of mine, but they took care of yours. You had better say forever, I guess. So that became the base. Every school district today, the difference between the high and the low is all based upon where those school districts were in 1993 and what's happened since. So, in 1995, there were 40 school districts in the state that were spending $4,200. That was the first year that the funding for Proposal A went into place. Another 268 were spending between $4,200 and $5,000. Another 195 school districts between $5,000 and $6,500. Then there were 52 school districts that were spending over $6,500 per pupil. And those were the school districts that, if they wanted to spend anything over $6,500, they had to levy an extra tax in order to get there. And Birmingham did it. Southfield did it for many years. Many of those 65 were essentially affluent communities. And they are actually paying more taxes in order to get that much money. So what did it look like last year? Obviously, we pulled all the districts together. 406 school districts were receiving $7,391 per pupil. Then there's the other 78 districts that were somewhere between $1 and $800 above that. And then we still have those 57 districts that are up at the $8,000 mark and above. But we've significantly closed the gap in terms of the high and the low within the state. So let's talk about what's been going on in terms of funding schools since Proposal A passed. This is the information that I pulled out of the U.S. Census Bureau. Actually, you know, the Census does more or less count us each, every, you know, 10 years to find out how many of us there are. They also keep track of local government revenues and expenditures. And they actually put out those reports once every five years that are detailed down to the type of government in each state. Now, in 1992, so just before Proposal A was put into place, Michigan was 10th in the nation in how much we spent per person on our K-12 systems. Okay? We were 10th. After Proposal A passed, we were 8th in 1997, 7th in 2002, 8th in 2007. Anybody remember what was happening in 2007? Things got a little hairy for us in this state. And schools paid the price, not just relative to us, but to everybody else. We dropped from 8th in the nation in 2007 to 25th in 2012. What we saw during that timeframe was everybody was struggling. Homeowners were... You don't have to know homeowners were struggling. All you got to do is go out and check the foreclosure lists in terms of what was happening. The Wayne-Oakland-McComb County area was the hardest-hit area in the state in terms of declining home values. We saw taxable values that, a mouthful, you actually paying taxes, on average, decreased by approximately 25% in Wayne-Oakland-McComb County. That doesn't even include how much your actual property value went down, which is called the state equalized value. So, the local governments essentially lost 25% of their ability to generate a dollar to come back in to the local school districts. Between that and from the state perspective, we didn't buy as much at stores, so sales tax was not going up. But relative to the nation, we probably took a bigger hit than most. There were a few states that really were hitting hard. Florida, Arizona, Nevada. But the difference was they were coming off of super highs. And actually, if you look at what they were doing, they were spending much, much, much more on everything, and then all of a sudden, they crash back down. But in the end, Michigan wasn't spending much, much, much more on everything. We were getting along, and then we fell, just as hard as they did. So we didn't have the benefit of the housing bubble. Ours was tiny bubbles, as opposed to some of the other states that were seeing big bubbles. So what was happening? Change in state support to local schools, elementary, secondary, community colleges. And again, this is from the U.S. Census and the information from that. Between 2002, which was actually the beginning of the Michigan one-state recession, and 2007, growth in revenues coming back from the state, which really controlled what's going on, grew by 24% in Michigan. The rest of the states saw, on average, about 30%. So we were behind, but it's hard to say, "Okay, we're about 5% a year behind." Still, we were ranked 29th out of 46 in terms of the growth during that timeframe. Then when the real recession hit, the state pulled back its resources. Over the next five years, money from the state was cut by 5%. On average, the rest of the states were having problems too, but they saw positive growth. And this time, we were 42nd out of 46. By the way, I didn't include four states that are actually run completely by the states. So some of the states like Virginia, Hawaii, they don't have local school operating money that comes into play. But between 2002 and 2012, Michigan was 43rd out of the 46 states that have local revenue in terms of how the state was helping local school districts. So, out of 10 years, we were growing at an average rate of about 1.8% per year, compared to about 3.6% for everybody else. That's a quick... Issues of Funding on a Per-Pupil Basis in an Era of Declining Enrollment. Having been on a school board, each year, when you were doing your budget, the big issue was, "Okay, what's our pupil count going to be?" When you saw years that you were going to have a positive pupil count, that meant you had revenues that you could put back into the educational system. So if you're getting your $8,000 per year, and you get an extra 100 students, all of a sudden, I've now got $800,000 to put back into programs. And that's the money that you have to pair to teachers with, you have to pay payrises with. But it's also the money that goes back into programs that you think will create a better education for your students. The problem is, in this state, especially compared to other states, have you noticed we are not growing? It's very distinct that we are not growing. Between our lack of growth, the declining birth rate, which is a national phenomenon, but in Michigan, it's distinct because we also don't have people moving into the state. Schools have choice, and charter schools and school districts are straining to figure out how to come up with a new dollar. Now, here are graphs, and these are numbers that we use at SEMCOG that are showing the number of children of Michigan's school-age population. And you can see in 1990, we had about 1.75 million students in this state. In 2000, we were approaching 2 million students in this state. So during that time period, most school districts were dealing with, "I have more students, so I can work my budget better." Everywhere else in the country, they were doing the same thing. The difference, obviously, is in 2000 to 2010, we started going down. By 2015, we were down to 1.65 million. So that's 300,000 less students. And that's total. That doesn't include the students that might have gone from one school district to another. The fact is, we're going to continue to go down. We're going to lose about another, you know, 50,000 students in the next couple of years. And it's not going back up. It's going to keep on going down for a while. About 2030, we should start seeing school-age students going up. Now, what could change this? We bring more people into the state. Kids start, you know, our kids start having more kids, more than we have, bigger families. Might change all this. But this is going to be pretty much the way it is. Michigan is not gaining, and that's causing problems within the school districts. Let's just talk about that. What is the cost of a new student that comes in? You know, you come, a new student joins your school system. So what is the cost of educating that student? Well, if there's a seat on the bus, it's no difference. If there's an empty seat in the classroom, and there's a set of books, there's no different cost to educating one more student that comes into that school building. So that extra money that comes from the state, there's no real cost associated with it. Of course, there may be a cost associated with it. Maybe there isn't a seat on a bus. So you need to buy a bus for $100,000. Hire another bus driver. Maybe there isn't a seat in the classroom. You need to hire another teacher. Maybe you don't even have room in a classroom. You've got to build another wing on the building. Maybe even another building. So that student could cost nothing. That student could cost $20 million to your school district. But most of the time, you figure out where to put that student in without increasing the cost much. Now, here's the problem. We are based, and have always been based, on how we budget under assumption that things are going to go up, and we work at it. You have a system where all of a sudden, there's fewer students. What is the savings when one last student shows up for that counting? Well, there's an empty seat on a bus. You're still running the bus. There's an empty desk, and a set of books aren't being used. But there's still a teacher. and a set of books aren't being used, but there's still a teacher, there's still a principal. So, maybe you lost twenty students in the school district. Well, twenty students, you should be able to eliminate a classroom, right? The problem is, you're in thirteen different grade levels. That's one person in each grade level, and of course, there's four different classrooms for each grade, or three different classrooms in every building. What do you do? You go in and start working, and this is the school board member in me, that's when you start going, okay, what can we cut that hopefully is not going to impact the student? You know, I had to deal with firing every janitor and bus driver I had in my school district. I was in the, I came in, I left the school board, my school district ran a deficit, and I came back. I made the motion. It was not pleasant. I knew a lot of those people. And frankly, those actions that I took didn't eliminate the deficit, it corrected the budget, pay off the debt. We had to do some other very, very creative things in order to pay off the debt. But the problem was, you're taking away the little things, the little things that can make the difference to a dozen children, to a hundred children, in terms of where they're going to end up in their experience at the end. You start cutting, and you hope you don't notice the cuts that come through. Eventually, you do notice the cuts that come through. You end up with bigger class sizes, you end up with some of those enrichment programs being eliminated. The pay freezes, we've got, every school district has gone through those. When you look at Michigan, and where Michigan's pay for teachers has gone, we had some of the best pay in the country ten years ago. Ain't even close to that anymore. This is, this is the problem, is, you know, everybody says you need to run schools like a business. But the problem is, if you're running it like a seven-eleven, if your sales are down, you still have to keep the store open, you still have to have the clerk on duty. A lot of times, there's not a whole lot you can do, just because there are a few less people coming in. We have created a system that is putting every school district in the same position, where they have to try and figure out how to do more with less. And the problem is, that experiment, we don't know whether it's good or bad until after a child has completed thirteen years of work in that school system. I'll let some others figure out and talk about whether it is working or not. There are a few other questions. Proposal A has an end objective of equal funding. Question is, should this be the objective? We talked about the per pupil basis, but we also know that there are certain students that it's more costly to educate than others. The state went out and said, okay, we'll hire this firm out of Colorado and say, come in and tell us, you know, how do we need to fund our students? And they said, well, you have certain problems, for instance. When you get into special education needs, paying eight thousand dollars per pupil doesn't cut it. Other special populations, high-risk populations, you really need to get in early and work hard to bring those students to a point where they're going to be able to move from grade to grade to grade so that you don't lose them. That's more expensive. They came out and said, well, maybe, maybe you can do that with the level of funding, you know, we'd like to see it a little bit higher for the general students, but we know you're really behind in those special type of programs. And there's quite a few students that fit into that. So, is per pupil funding the right way to fund when we know in this state, every school district is going to be struggling with fewer and fewer students? We are based on a model that we have one building servicing twelve hundred students? How many students here? Fourteen. Wasn't too far off. This building's still going to be here, even though there's going to be thirteen hundred students in it, hopefully, and then maybe twelve hundred. And yes, you can cut teachers back from time to time, but the fact is, you're always going to be behind the curve. So, in order to get ahead of it, you're going to have to cut some other things. So, it's going to be those other programs that are going to disappear because of that. I am amazed, and I'm standing in a brand-new theater. This is fantastic. What do you guys think of this? I was telling you, I'm one of the few people in the world that has a daughter working in a salary position in the world of theater. So, believe it or not, there are jobs for all of you back there in the theater. We got our full ride scholarship to Yale. This is a huge problem. You are lucky that you have the resources to help put together facilities. Schools are a magnet for the community. They are, in many cases, the identity of the community. The things that we can do for our kids, let's put it this way, we do anything we can for our kids. And we want them to succeed. Problem is, some school districts can provide facilities, other districts can't. That is still a problem that they could never address with proposal A, and that may be a problem that's going to have to be addressed at some point or another. In other states, for instance, the state takes care of all the buildings, but we've seen that all over the state where it's not happening. So, that's my presentation, to give you a little bit of the history of where we came from and where we are today. So, what I'm going to do is open it up, that's been pretty nice, you know, in terms of not jumping up with questions or challenges, but I'm very open. Questions for any, from anyone?
You see some districts that are funded at the lowest level, and other districts that are funded at a higher level, yet did not fund the local property tax. What's the historical basis for that?
Okay, the question is, we have some districts that are funded at a much lower level than others, but it's not necessarily a property tax issue. It originally was a property tax issue, and that's where I go back, that everything that we have today, in terms of how much one school district gets versus another, goes back to what, where they were in nineteen ninety-three. And everything has been calculated off of that base here. So, we brought some school districts up, we've kept some other school districts, you know, the most affluent school districts can't generate more money by adding another property tax, because law says you can't do that, with one exception. And that's an ISD-wide election that can generate more money that goes to all of the students within that intermediate school district, or regional education area. So, it really goes back to where they were in nineteen ninety-three, and that is really what determines where you are today, because we froze in place with proposal A.
This one, I understand, that maybe there are two situations. There's some districts that are funded at a base rate, some districts that are funded at a higher rate, and then other districts that have a whole formless property tax.
Tax. Yes. Remember that slide when I showed the nineteen ninety-five, and there were those districts that were levying over sixty-five hundred? In order to generate more than sixty-five hundred dollars that year, they levy more millage to get back to where they were. So, the state said, we will, we will support you to sixty-five hundred dollars. After sixty-five hundred dollars, to keep yourself harmless from where you were in nineteen ninety-three, you have to continue to levy a millage. So, that was essentially holding them harmless from prior to proposal A, and yes, they levy a millage in order to do that. So, there are those, and there's only, like I said, about a little over sixty districts that are allowed to do that, based upon how much they were receiving per pupil prior to proposal A. And that's why they're still allowed to do that, because we didn't want to say, oh, I'm sorry, you gotta cut two thousand dollars per pupil and bring it back down to sixty-five there. People in Birmingham would have been pissed. Other questions?
Are there any rumblings anywhere about changing proposal A?
Are there any rumblings about changing proposal A? There have been rumblings about changing proposal A since the past. It's a delicate balance. I have to honestly say, I don't think I would have served on a school board if proposal A hadn't passed, because I didn't want to go back and be the rod rock every single year and say, no, I need another millage. That wasn't me. So, there are those things where controlling has its benefits, but at the same point, we've gotten to the point where the state, I don't think, has put the same priority on getting money back into education that they did when proposal A passed. And when I look, for instance, some of the things that I do is, I look at how much money the state spends back to local governments over periods of time. And the state has gone from sending back almost two cents out of every three cents it collects, back to our cities, our schools, our counties, in two thousand and two, to just fifty-three cents, no, fifty-four cents out of every dollar it collects. So, in fact, for a decade, the state essentially froze the total amount of money it was sending back to local governments, while the amount of money that they collected that they put into their own operations grew by four billion dollars. That shows up in the bottom lines of the school districts. Then, when you add on, oh, by the way, you know, when you start talking, well, we increased the per pupil funding allowance, but if you have declining enrollment, you're still creating smaller budgets. And that is a problem in a system that we have. And quite frankly, I'd love to figure out a different way of operating a school system under those kinds of conditions where you're shrinking, but quite frankly, there isn't a school system out there that has learned how to excel while shrinking.
I mean, it's more of a problem than a question, is, if you have a declining birth rate, so we also have to see growth of charter.
Yes.
It's just, you know, exacerbated with the per pupil.
The per pupil funding problem, the rise of charter schools. And it's always seemed silly to me that we're funding two separate school systems, which we're funding a public school, and in some places, we're funding charter schools in the same district. And it makes no sense when you base your funding on a per pupil basis. And especially when you look at the investment that goes into creating the base of your school system, which is the buildings, the hundreds of millions of dollars that's invested in the billing, buildings to house those students, it is the challenge. And obviously, with charter schools, the challenge that legislators laid out is, well, if I let them go over here, and because they maybe have a better product over here, then you're going to have to improve your product. And, you know, intuitively, you say, okay. But the problem is, and we can see this, that at some point, the question is, is it raising everybody? And I question whether it is raising everybody. In fact, it may be taking others even further down than where they were before. And what it also ignores is the challenge, the financial challenges that the local elected officials have to deal with in terms of shrinking and maintaining quality while they shrink. The state has never had to do that. The state is growing every year. They say that they have deficits, but that means when they look at how much money they need to operate, it went up, and they didn't get enough money to cover that, so that's a deficit. Local governments actually saw revenues go down and had to make the cuts. That was a true deficit. The state hasn't had to deal with that. They just have, had to deal with growth, it didn't match the growth of their operations.
Exactly, a proper question, but there was a lot of talk about consolidation of services, updating the scale, and, you know, if you look at a state like Virginia, where things are at a county scale, where we've gone in the opposite direction, we've got charter schools, each one has its own school district, I noticed your numbers up there, you have four hundred and six school districts, and one of them, assuming a lot of those were charter schools.
Actually, those are the public age ones.
Well, each of the districts.
Yeah.
All right. But we haven't gone down for four for so much.
No, no, yeah.
This is important here. So, it is, this, this proposal to do a millage at county scale, sort of, I don't call it county, county system light, but is there any real savings to be found in consolidation of the school districts?
This has been the question, I remember serving in the summer of nineteen ninety-three. We had a group of legislators get together, and they were focused on, well, gee whiz, if we just consolidated administrations, we could save some money there, and if we did this, and we did that. There might be some situations that are out of margin, you might be able to save a little money once. The fact is, it's not going to change the direction of cost increases, which is the bigger challenge. When we're at twenty-fifth in the nation, going from tenth to twenty-fifth, believe me, school districts have figured out a lot of ways to get back from going from tenth to twenty-fifth in order to keep the doors open. We've used a lot of tricks at school districts, everything that you can think of. There's a lot of resources that do go, I mean, that's where, you know, Wayne Reeser comes into play. They provide a lot of services that you probably don't see on a daily basis, that are coming into the buildings to help out individual school districts throughout the county. And that is really what Wayne Reeser is all about. But if we just made a bigger school district, it's interesting, when I look at the most cost-efficient school districts, they are generally school districts with the lowest administrative costs, or school districts that are Class A with one or two high schools. So, actually, I hate to say it, I'm standing in one that maybe is a little bit above that, and it becomes a bigger challenge, because you've got too many buildings, so you, actually, administratively, it could cost you. But, so, suburban Detroit area is pretty much at the best point in the state in terms of controlling administrative costs, which is where you would think that those kinds of costs would come from. No.
Can you touch on the effect that the legacy, the MIPSers in particular, has had on this whole debacle?
Yes. One of the things that I worked on with the legislature for many years were public pensions. And I remember when I first started working, I'd get the annual reports, and I remember the first annual report from nineteen eighty-three that I was looking at, the cost of providing health care to retired school employees in this state was thirty-five million dollars. Thirty-five million dollars to provide health care to every one of the retired school employees in this state in nineteen eighty-three. Anybody want to guess that it's above that right now? I, actually, I haven't looked lately, because I haven't been doing this stuff lately, but I'm going, I know it's over a billion, so it's only gone from thirty-five million to a billion. Actually, the biggest challenge is in paying off the retiree health care. That is what is driving the costs up. The state, and this goes back, the state likes to pull money out of the pension fund from time to time, or not put any in, in order to help out, which just creates a bigger hole. in order to help out, which just creates a bigger hole. I went back, Governor Blanchard did this last year. Because he needed to get more money into the operations, it hurts the pension system. Pension costs have gone through the roof. The basic cost of providing a pension to a teacher has remained constant. The problem is unfunded liabilities have gone up, add in the health care costs, and all of a sudden, you're talking about situations where, I don't even know what the rate is these days, but it's 30-something percent, isn't it? Thirty percent. So for every dollar they pay a teacher, they got to put aside, you know, another 30 cents to send back to the state's pension fund to pay for those pensions. And most of that is to try and bring up the health care reserve, to have money for the future, and paying off all debts. And the state, during the bad years, wasn't putting all the money it should have been either. And that's exacerbated the situation. Okay? And it's time, I got the, I got the book.
Well, hopefully, we have some time to hand, as we mentioned, for some final questions and answers, but we want to get on to our two other speakers. So at this time, we're going to turn it over to the deputy superintendent for Wayne County, Risa, Steve Zieke.
We spent a few minutes talking about what's going on right now in terms of school funding. And Bill mentioned it, alluded to it, in terms of state adequacy study. So Bill has gone and talked about proposal A, and that structure, and where we're at with it, and what that's left us with. And we're gonna talk a little bit about what the adequacy study brings to the conversation, and where that conversation might go. Proposal A, as Bill said, was a tax proposal, and was an education funding proposal. At no time when they were discussing proposal A did they say, "What does it cost to educate a student?" Okay? And that question is being asked now. And the adequacy study that the state recently went with was a result of, I think, some backroom deals in the legislature to get one thing for another, and the adequacy study popped out of it. And the adequacy study that the state did was prescribed by the state. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about what an adequacy study is, and what the state's study was, and what the findings were, and a little bit where we're going with it. So, if you think about what an adequacy study is, we can move on there, because I'm gonna move on there. So an adequacy study is meant to determine the cost of something, the annual operating cost of doing something that, because the resources that are needed to meet standards specific to a state expectation. Okay? So what does it need to do, and the state's telling us to do, what do we need? So there's two words in there when I talk about expectations and need. So if we look at expectations, you've got things like what's constitutionally required, what the state law requires, what federal law requires, what regulators require. Those are things like, how many, it's okay. Thank you. Nice call, as you know. How many hours and how many days of instruction we have to do, what kind of testing we're doing, what the curriculum is, what achievement looks like. Things like that, special education requirements by both the state and federal level are the state expectations. So, we have those expectations, what does it cost to do that? And when you look at it, what does it cost to do that, you also have to look at the needs in a certain district. So those needs may be demographic. What's the poverty rate in that district? What's the English language learner rate in that district? Maybe the special education population in that district? The geographics, meaning, look at transportation in Harper Woods versus Plymouth Canton. It's a different mammal, right? It's a tiny community, a very large community. What's going on economically? What's the economics of employing people here in Southeast Eastern Michigan versus employing people in Northern Michigan? There's a difference. That goes into the need, and then economies of scale. How can a small district provide the same level of opportunity at the high school, for example, that a large district can't? Those are things that need to be taken into consideration. That's the need. So you look at the need and the expectations, and what does it take to do that? That's what an adequacy study does. And there's several ways to do that. There's several models that are recognized nationally in terms of how do you perform an adequacy study? If you look across the country, I think, I'm gonna get this right, I think there are 25 states that have gone through a significant adequacy study in regards to funding education. Michigan is the latest. So if you look at the successful schools model, what that does is take data about schools that are meeting those expectations, and it looks at what they're doing, what resources are using to provide that education. If you look at the professional judgment model, that's a little bit more focused on an individual district. It's about taking professionals, looking at a situation, and analyzing what it takes to meet the needs in that situation. The evidence-based approach is a statistical model, excuse me, is a best practice model that looks at not only what's going on in the district, but that looks at how do you sustain it over time, and reassesses that after you've had experience with the model. And then the statistical approach is a modeling approach that looks at inputs in terms of resources versus outputs in terms of achievement and success, and develops rubrics and regression models around it, and builds a funding model around that. In Michigan, they didn't really use any of these models, truthfully, truly. The Michigan study was from it. The Michigan study kind of used the successful school district model, but didn't have the broad base of school districts to do analysis on. They picked 58 school districts that the state said, "These are the successful school districts. We want you to study these school districts and tell us what you see in those school districts." So it wasn't a true model that any of the nationally recognized models would use. If you look at the findings, in these school districts that they looked at in Michigan, in these 58 districts, the base cost expenditures was $8,600. Remember the graph that Bill showed where the funding was in terms of the foundation grant? We had mostly districts around $7,300, $7,300. So we've got a greater than $1,000 difference. And we're talking about base costs, here we use the word "base," we need, what is it needed to provide a base education for a student that doesn't need extra inputs? So those categories, I talked about demographics earlier, whether they're English language learners, or special education students, or poverty students, students of poverty that requires additional funding. In Wayne County, Randy, correct me if I'm wrong, if you add those three categories together, special education, poverty, and English language learners, we're probably close to 50% of our student population fits into one of those categories. If you look at the modeling that they've done across the country in terms of a specific analysis on those populations, and what it takes to serve those populations for a special education student, depending on the severity of their need, it could be a minimum double or triple the base cost. For an English language learner, it'd be one and a half to two times the base cost. For a poverty student, it could be anywhere from 1.3 to 1.9 of the base cost. None of that was taken into account in the state's study. The other finding that we had is that funding from the state and local sources need to be available for English language learners at a higher rate than they currently are in the state. That creating a system that better is tracking special education need to be developed. They didn't really comment on special education in Michigan, because the state didn't give them the benefit to track those costs. In Michigan, special education services are either provided at the local level, or the county level, or a combination of both, like there's in Wayne County, and the state didn't write the request for the services to do this adequacy study in enough detail for the studier to be able to assess special education costs. So they've made a general comment that there needs to be additional funding for special education, but they weren't able to analyze it. There was no regional benchmarking for non-instructional expenditure. So when you look at what's going on in the classroom, when you look at support services, whether that be total and maintenance, transportation, food service, and other things that it takes to run a district, there was no benchmarking that was done in the study to look at what does it take to do that in Wayne County versus what it takes to do that in the west side of the state or up north. And there was no benchmarking for capital needs or that service. And Bill kind of talked about that, that really, there's no system in the state of Michigan to know or track what the capital needs are in any school district, so the study couldn't look at that. You're pretty much on your own in Michigan in terms of your capital needs. If you can convince your community that you need additional resources to expand your infrastructure, you go out for a bond proposal, and that becomes a debt of the community over time to pay off of. But the number of dollars generated in each community is different, and the ability of taxpayers to pay in each community is different. So if you go across the state, it's from soup to nuts in terms of what you see in terms of capital, infrastructure resources in districts. And that's the biggest need that wasn't addressed in this study. What are we gonna do about that in a lot of districts across the state that are buildings that are in excess of 60 or 70 years old and haven't been updated for 40 or 50 years? And the last finding was that Michigan should work towards a more equitable system, which was kind of obvious to all of us. So, the state did this study, and we're glad they did. It did give us some good information. If you look at the base cost number, issue of $8,600, that's good for that to be out there, and it's hard for us to ignore, and it's hard for policymakers to ignore that number. That is far and above more than most districts are getting. But it did fall short in a number of areas. Fortunately, there is a group of school community people that have received a grant from Kellogg Foundation to extend the study, to look at the other issues that need to be talked about when you look at school funding, based on the needs, those special need areas, those special population areas, the capital, things like that. And that study is just going underway, and we expect to have results from that, I think, within the years, is that correct, Randy? So that's where the adequacy study is. I'm really grateful that the state has taken the step, because you can't take the step without saying paying attention to what the results are. And there are results from the study. They're not complete, but there are results that need to be addressed. And hopefully, we'll get some more information from the work that is being done through the Kellogg Foundation. I'm gonna turn it over to Randy to talk about some of our short-term funding possibilities. And if you have questions on this or his afterwards, we'll be glad to take them to us.
Good evening, everybody. My voice is a little hoarse. I've done a few presentations on this particular topic over the last several days and weeks. So, I'm very pleased to be here with you to share a little bit of information about what this particular proposal is, and really talk about, in a bigger context, what Bill and what Steve laid out, which is what's going on with school funding in Michigan, where are we at, and what do we need to do. So, I want to start just by saying how great it is to be here. In deference to my very, very good friends in Plymouth Canton and in Van Buren, and even in Wayne Westland, where I started my career, it is very, very exciting to me to be here today in this wonderful facility, in a place where I spent 21 years of my career. So, it is just wonderful to be here with you tonight. Here's a trivia question for you. Who, in 1986, were the lead independent auditors on the Wayne Westland School Audit? Steve Zieke and Randy Leitman. It's a true story. That's a true story, and that's where we started. Steve and I were accountants when we started our careers, and we actually worked at the Wayne Westland Audit way back in 1986 together. Steve was a lot smarter than I was, he was my boss at that time, and he still is, which is probably why he's the deputy superintendent, he's smarter than me to be the superintendent. But Steve has been involved in school finance for 30 years, or 15 years, and has been involved in local school districts. Worked at Bright and Redford, he's a remarkable resource, and he's helped to put this kind of thinking into process as we move forward. So, as we think about what was laid out by Bill, what was laid out by Steve, what are the long-term and short-term things that we can't do to address this issue that was laid out? I think we've laid out a pretty clear case that in Michigan, we have to do something about the way schools are funded in Michigan, in our state. Long-term, Steve really has described that as the adequacy study, and it's what are we gonna do about the adequacy study? And so when we think about long-term solutions, really taking a hard look at what's going on with school funding in the state of Michigan, and coming up with good policy suggestions, changes, recommendations, is really what needs to happen. And so the adequacy study has taken step one, and running to getting us moving in that direction. And as Steve mentioned, we're very excited to be part of a process that's actually gonna study that much deeper. Kellogg Foundation gave us $150,000 to take it a step further, and we're actually gonna raise more money above and beyond that through a group of community leaders, not school people, but community leaders across the state of Michigan, that believe school funding needs to be fixed in Michigan, and they want to be part of it. And so they just released a press release recently, and you're gonna see more information about what they're gonna do with coming up with very strong recommendations about what we should do with the school funding system in Michigan. That's gonna take a little time. Not only to finish the study, as Steve mentioned, it's gonna take about a year to do that, but then to come up with recommendations and work them through the process in Lansing. That's the long-term solution. What can we do in the short term? As you know, the state controls funding for all school districts in Michigan, and so we're limited in regards to what we can do. But there is one option for local school districts to somehow take back a little bit of control as it relates to augmenting the funds that are available to them to provide educational services. It is called the Wayne County Regional Enhancer Village. We have a proposal on the ballot, and that's coming up in November. And what I'd like to do tonight is share with you exactly what that is. And so, start with just a little bit of background information. Actually, you heard about proposal A, right? One of the things they did with proposal A in 1994 is they did provide an option for local communities to say, "If the state, if we want to augment what's going on with funding for the state of Michigan, if we want to augment that help on our local school districts, we can do that." But remember what one of the things was of proposal A they wanted to do, right? They wanted to take the top and bottom and get them closer together. So they said, "Look, and we're not gonna allow any more local school villages to do that, because that's gonna separate them apart." They said, though, that you could use, on a regional basis, a request for a village if the people in that area agreed to do that. And so, the reason they did that, and it has to be shared equally, the reason they did that in 1994 is they said, "You can augment the money, but if you're gonna go for a local village, it's not gonna be $100 in Ecores and $400 in Rose Point for the same village." So, they do allow that to occur. That's the one exception, really, as it relates to how you can provide additional funds for local operating purposes, for local school districts to run their programs, class size, teachers, supplies, those types of daily operational types of things. And the only way you can do that is if enough school systems within New York, within your region, in our case, Wayne County Risa, the Wayne County School Systems, and if enough school districts agree to put on the ballot that represents half of the students. So that's what happened in Wayne County. The school districts came to us and said, "We have to do something with their funding. We're willing to go and request some added money from our taxpayers to do this, even though the way it gets spread out will not be based on my property tax, my local community, but it'll be spread out evenly throughout our county." So, again, it must be proposed on a county-wide basis. It passes or fails on a county-wide basis. So if it does not pass in Rose Point, but it passes overall, it passes. And guess what? Rose Point will benefit from that. If it passes in Detroit, it passes nowhere else, and it passes overall, it passes. And it passes for everybody within your, within the county. So it's an all-or-nothing proposition as it relates to how this works. If it approved, the money's collected by us, but then we distribute it equally to all constituent school districts, and then each district has that money, and they have local control over what they want to do with it. Okay? So that's a regional county enhancement village. What's the specific proposal that's on the ballot as a short-term fix here for Wayne County? It's a November ballot, again, two mills. It's six years. Why only six years? Because we're hoping at some point in time, the state's going to do something with school funding in the state, and so we didn't want to ask our taxpayers for a commitment any longer than that period of time. It would generate about $385 per student. We have never seen an increase of $385 per student since proposal A passed. The good old days, back in the 1990s, I think the best we ever got was $250 per student, which is barely inflation. Okay? $385 per student. What's the cost of that? If you have a home, for every $100,000 of value in your home, it's about $8 per month, about $100 per year. about $100 per year. Again, the money comes to local school districts and it actually starts this year. So if this is passed and on the November ballot, we'll actually collect the taxes and the winter tax collection and the money will go, we're required to give it out to all the school districts. We keep nothing of it. It all goes to local school districts within 10 days of us collecting that money. So that would come in this school year if it indeed passed. One of the things I want to mention, just as a, as it relates to county-wide taxes, when we compare Wayne County to other counties with their villages, because some districts have special education villages, we do here. Some districts have vocational villages, we do not here. Some districts may have, or some counties have a regional enhancement village. When we looked at it statewide, the 56 intermediate school systems, of the 56 intermediate school systems, we are below in Wayne County, the average, median, and our village rate. Even more important, when you look at what that military rate generates, because overall our property taxes are pretty low in Wayne County, we actually have the second lowest amount of money that we collect per mill than the entire state of Michigan, the second lowest. Okay? If we had just the average, we would be double compared to where we're at right now. So even though we have a low military county-wide, lower than the average, median, when you take into the fact that we have a low property tax base, the dollars that we're collecting compared to other counties is pretty low. Why do we do this? Again, Wayne County districts have the goal of providing the kind of education where we want every single student in our schools to be successful. And we believe that it's worth going to ask our community members, as hard as that is, to make an investment on behalf of our kids. Here's a fact, from 2011 to 2015, I went and I added up all the general funds, all the general fund dollars in people's budgets in Wayne County. We have $485 million less in Wayne County in 2015 than we had in 2011. Remember, we talked about declining enrollment? $485 million less in Wayne County since 2011. Despite various stabilizing measures, including reducing, increasing salaries, benefits, administrative costs, implementing other cost-saving measures, closing schools, et cetera, et cetera. And Bill laid that out and you all know that personally, despite doing all that, we're still feeling challenged in regards to our ability to maintain the current core programs that we're providing our kids. Recent statewide school funding adequacy study has was shared. We know that we're receiving probably at least $1,000 or more or less than we need to educate our kids right now. That does not include the amount of money that we need to educate our special education students, our English language learners, or consider coming to us at risk. So when you look at that, when you look at the fact that down $485 million, the fact that we've implemented all sorts of budget-saving measures to try to continue to provide programs, the fact that we know that we're funded lower than we really need to be, we look at all that, districts came to us and said, you know what? We need to take this to our voters and see if they will continue to try to augment the program, the dollars that we have to continue to maintain the programs that we offer. How will the money be used? Big question. It's up to every single school district to determine how they're going to spend their money. Okay? Here are the things that we've heard when we talk to school districts. It's a little different in every school district. Guess what? Livonia's not as concerned about facility improvements as they are in neighboring school districts because we passed the bond issue, right? What we are concerned here about them is maintaining the programs that we have and our class sizes. So teachers to maintain programs, reduce class size, a high priority. Repairing buildings for some schools, a high priority, improving technology. Maintaining, we're improving school programs, what we're doing to meet the needs of those EAL kids, of those at-risk kids, high priority for our local schools. And hiring and retaining teachers, which I can share with you, Gloucester County is probably the number one issue, probably in our state, the number one issue that we are facing in education. We're losing our teachers and kids are not going into education. The number of kids into the College of Education programs right now for education is down significantly. There are certain content areas, if you want to be a physical education teacher at some of our universities, can't do it because they don't offer it anymore. They shut the program down. This is frightening because this is the next 30 years of our future. The next 30 years of the future are the teachers that we're hiring today and teachers are not going into education and teachers are leaving the profession. And we're seeing teachers leaving our school districts to go to other school districts. Number one issue across our county. So those are the big issues in regards to how school districts have talked about wanting to spend their money. There will be a local decision in every school district. Again, I just want to share a few other facts with you that are pretty interesting when we look at why, why do school districts want to do this? Why did they come and ask us to put this ballot proposal forward? Again, the adequacy study concluded, the resources to educate at-risk English language learners are low in Michigan, 30% to 40% below what we should be spending. Federal study, Michigan down 7.5% since 2008 based inflation to fund schools. And you saw we're down, the growth has been almost the lowest in the entire country as it relates to what we've been putting into education. Again, the issue of declining enrollment and there's been study after study issue was what happens when school districts are declining enrollment. Here's a couple interesting facts as it relates to the fact that we have students in our county that are challenged as it relates to when they come to school and what they need. And let's make no mistake about it, every one of our school districts wants every one of their kids to succeed. It is that simple. Look at this, percentage of students living in poverty in Wayne County, we know that's the number one predictor in regards to kids coming ready to school and their success in school. 43% in Wayne County, 17% statewide. From 1999 to 2011, poverty in Wayne County's gone from 21% to 38% and the trend's been growing since 2006. Look at this last number here, English language learners in Wayne County. There are 20,000 kids getting serviced just five years ago in 2010. Now there's 30,000 kids and the number continues to grow. We need resources to help these kids and it's that simple. We want every one of these kids to be successful. And so these are the types of challenges that we know we're up against as regards to how much money we've had coming in and what the needs are of our students. And you combine those two things together and here we are asking for an investment in, in our kids, in our communities. Because we know if we don't have good schools, we do not have good communities. It is that simple. So that's the short-term solution that we're looking at. Talked a little bit about the long-term solution. And with that, Andre, I'm going to turn it over to you. If we have any questions for any of us, we'll be happy to answer a few more and then... Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you.
First of all, a round of applause for the deputy. On the, on the issue of short-term steps and what can we do getting involved, staying involved, educating ourselves? If you'll take a look at the green card that we provided for you this evening, we wanted to have something, as we talked, as our, as local superintendents, as we talked about this, one of the things that we felt was important was to have some fast facts for you to take away from this evening. We will also be sharing this information with each district, so you can include these PowerPoints on your, on your website and have this information. We've also taped it this evening and we'll also provide that video out for folks to replay. But in the meantime, as you are advocating, either with your legislature, legislator, if you're talking to your neighbor, if you are advocating within your community, take a look at the fast facts that we've shared with you, just some of the key statistics that you saw as you came into the auditorium this evening, rolling through. On the bottom of that, if you are not already a member of the Tri-County Alliance Action Alert Network, please join. Take a moment, hop on there. They are very judicious about when they send out legislative action alerts. But we need to collectively raise our voices on behalf of the students that we serve. In order to do that, you need to know when to do it and about what topics. If you sign up at the bottom of tricountyalliance.org slash action, if you sign up for that, you'll receive legislative action alerts, you'll receive information about what's happening, bills that are pending in our legislature and how you can have your voice heard on these important topics related to school funding. Please take just a moment, sign up, and again, that will be one important way for you to stay involved and to be an advocate for the children entrusted to us. On the other side, we've given you some information about places where you can learn more. There are some websites up at the top that regularly have articles and information about school funding and our public education in Michigan. There are some ways that you can take action. One of the things we ask you to do, however you feel about the Wayne County Enhancement Village, please be informed and inform those around you. You see a website there, risa.net backslash village for more information. We also have information cards out in the outside concession area. Unfortunately, we don't have concessions, but we do have cards for you that you can pick up with information about the village. And then again, just, we have just a short sheet there for you. These are the legislators that represent each of our four school districts. So if you need to have an email address or a phone number at the ready, when you do see those legislative action alerts come out, they are there for you. So please take this with you, keep this in your purse, keep this in your portfolio and please be sure that you are a voice and joining us in this effort. When I opened this evening, one of the things I said is this matters. It matters to us because it matters to our children, our schools, our children, our future. They are our community and they are worth every effort that we can put forth. We'd like to just open it up for a few minutes to questions and Randy will ask you to come back up and answer any questions that folks may have. Just for the, for the taping, it would be easier if you were able to ask the question into a mic. And so if we could just give a quick shout out, I want to introduce the principal of Franklin High School, Dan Willenberg. Dan, are you still in the theater? Dan, Mr. Willenberg, thank you for having us here this evening. And I take a minute and introduce your awesome theater crew. We have our students here, wave from the, we see some folks in the back and down here in the front. We have students who have taken on the responsibility and give a shout out to each of our Franklin Patriots for serving in that role. Thank you, Sarah and also Dan, thank you so much for being a pleasure for this evening. All right, if you have a question, raise your hand, we'll get a mic out to you.
You said it's a six-year. What happens there after six years? If the state decides not to do it, then what happens?
I can only guess, but my guess is the school districts involved in Wayne County will come back to us and say, the state hasn't fixed it yet, we'd like to renew the existing village. That would be my guess.
And then what would happen if there were a school district and one of the others, afterward, another school district decided that they didn't want to do the two mills? For the other, you know, and the other ones, because obviously they don't have, you know, the people in that school district really don't have the finances, then what happens?
It's an all or nothing deal. So it's a county-wide property tax. And so when it goes up, everybody in the county pays it. If it goes down, no one in the county pays it. So you don't get to choose by community. It's on a county-wide basis only.
I've been told from a school board member from Plymouth Township, who's had meetings and he's supposed to risa, that the city of Livonia over six years will give to risa $50 million and in return will receive $34 million in the same six years. Is that true?
I don't know the exact numbers, but that's probably right. It's million true. And at this point in time, when school districts like Livonia, Plymouth County look at this, they basically said, this is the only game in town. There's nothing else we can do. And so $34 million is $34 million. We want to protect programs for kids. And on a statewide basis, we know that we're currently paying in Livonia more city, more property tax, more income tax, more sales tax, and we don't get quite as much back through the state either. So it is the only game in town.
And then what is the number one school district that's going to receive the more than they actually put into?
I'd have, I'd have to look at that.
I would call it the city of Detroit.
It might be, it might be Ecorse. They may have a lower property tax value than Detroit, but I'm not sure.
Ecorse has a village rate of 104. So this is going to put two more mills on them, two more burden on the citizens of Ecorse.
That's right.
And the affluent community.
And for a property tax home, a home that's worth $20,000 in Ecorse, they'll pay an extra $20 for you.
There's some nice homes in Ecorse too.
We, we know in Livonia that our funds here have been spent well, but if you're living here in Livonia, you may not know school districts, let's say Ecorse. How do we, as taxpayers, how are we assured that that money's going to be sent and spent correctly? Is there any checks and balances to know that those funds will be spent the way they're supposed to be?
Yeah, I mean, as I mentioned before, the money goes to every local school system and they have to determine how they're going to use that and they're accountable to that money to their own local community. So it'll be every local school system that will go through the same types of checks and balances, audits, et cetera. And they'll be of course accountable to their citizens. And their citizens, if they set, for example, you know, we want to use this money to maintain class size and they don't do that, that school board, they'll be responsible to their citizens in regards to those decisions.
Great. My, my second question is, a lot of people are concerned about charter schools. Does this money go to fund charter schools?
No. This is very similar to, when you think about a local bond issue. School districts can still do local bond issues to raise money, to generate, to transfer facilities. And that money does not go to, when you, when you do that locally, that money does not go to the charter schools locally. And so this type of village is the same as a local village, just done on a regional basis, of course, because of all the reasons we talked about with Proposal A. But it's considered like a local village and that when school districts, school communities are approving that, they're approving that for their local school systems and not any individual charter schools.
You know, it's a sad commentary where teachers have to beg for raises and then when they get a raise, they have to turn around and have to pay for hospitalization. Is this a pattern that's continued with young teachers? I watched the board, I see these teachers begging for raises. Will some of this money go for, I don't know?
Again, that'll be a decision made by every local school system in regards to what their needs are. And of course, you know, if you're running any organization, you have to make sure that the people that are there doing the work are the best people possible. And so that's going to be part and parcel of the consideration, I'm sure, as local school districts are looking at what their needs are. Again, I highlighted the number one issue that we're seeing is retaining and attracting good teachers in our school systems and that is a high, high priority. So also with those priorities of working conditions for the staff. That means having the appropriate materials, having good class sizes. Those are the things that we've been hearing about that people want to do to make sure that the, the working conditions are good for those teachers, to maintain them and to attract them to the business. So they can, you know, so we can, you know, so that's a benefit obviously on both ends for, for kids, to have good class sizes and helping the staff who are trying to do the
Hi, Dr. Lee, I'm glad you mentioned local bonds because I am wondering, a lot of what I'm hearing is people are saying, why wouldn't we just do a local village or a local bond instead of doing the county-wide enhancement village? So could you explain what would be the benefit for, for doing the county-wide village?
Yeah, again, it's the only game in town. And so while some communities may say, boy, it would, it would be nice if I could just ask for a local village to augment my school programs, to augment those dollars that are coming from the state, that was stopped in 1994 for operating purposes. And so if you want dollars for operating purposes, to pay for the daily cost of operating schools, buying textbooks, buying materials, hiring teachers, et cetera, if you want to augment your funds from the state for that, there's only one game in town and that's a, that's a regional enhancement.
So the difference is, is that a bond can't go for those operating?
Yeah, except for that, of course, yeah, you can ask for a local bond, absolutely. But that can only be to fixed facilities. And so if you're going for a local bond, you cannot use And so if you're going for a local bond, you cannot use that money to do the daily types of things to provide those programs and services for kids in end schools.
Let me hear you again, please. Hello.
Is there a thought or concern that by doing this, it's a disincentive for the state to actually solve the issue?
Yeah, that's a great question. And interestingly enough, was an argument by the local newspapers in this area the last time this went. But when's the state gonna fix it? That's the question. We've been waiting for a long time for the state to fix this, and school districts are at the point in time where they're pretty much out of options as villain as they had laid out. Close schools, reduce administrative staff, pay freezes, pay reductions, increase in healthcare contributions, et cetera, those things have all happened, and the state has yet to step up and take care of this. And remember, we're just one area of the state. And so if this goes here, there's still fifty-five other communities that they have to deal with, and so I don't see that as being a disincentive at all, because, you know, I'd love to say that we thought the state was gonna fix this, but they're not. This is our one chance to take back some level of local control to address providing programs for our kids.
Thank you.
In terms of the state and their incentive to help us, the additional amount of three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars per pupil still will not bring, please correct me if I'm wrong, will still not bring the vast majority of our students up to that ideal number that was recommended through the adequacy study, which was a very conservative number.
That's correct. Yeah, it would have to be anywhere from five hundred to fifteen hundred dollars, depending on what school district you're in, in order to really meet what the adequacy study said that would be needed. And that's just, as Steve outlined, the base cost. That's just the everyday general classroom that doesn't touch those English-language learners, those at-risk kids that are coming to us, who need additional support to be successful. And so, yeah, this is just a way for us to try to maintain and improve the existing programs that we have, and but we really, if we want to do it the right way in Michigan, we have to do some things significantly different than even what we're proposing here, and that's why this is a short-term solution.
Yeah, hi, I just have a question. I definitely would support this, it would be more of a curiosity, where would this put us nationally with this additional funding, like ranking-wise?
That I don't have a specific answer to, you know. Mr. Anderson had laid out that we're, you know, in the neighborhood of Twenty-Fifth where we were a few years ago, three-hundred-and-eighty-five was per student, my guess, and would make a huge difference, up or down, one way or the other, in regards, it wouldn't put us in the tenth or third, maybe it would put us in the twenty-third or twenty-first, would be my guess, but we haven't analyzed exactly where that would be, where that would put us nationally.
I think one of the problems that happens with school funding, and I've been an educator in Plymouth Canton District for twenty-eight years, thirty years in the state of Michigan, is that everybody only gets a glimpse of school funding, the eight years, ten years where their students were in the district. But if you talk to a teacher who's been in education for thirty years, the difference between when I started, in terms of the programs that are available, the classes that are offered, class size, and the things that we do now, is vastly different. And I don't know if a district should sit down with the people that have been around thirty years and say, "Let me tell you about the good old days." And while three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars may not seem like a tremendous amount, it's not what the adequacy study asks for, for those of us in classrooms, it would be a tremendous amount of money. And I understand that while some of us in Plymouth Canton and Livonia and Northville may give more, we're on a desert island, and food can be dropped, but only if you're willing to share the food. So you have to ask yourself, "Do I want to die, or do I want to share my food?" And I think for a lot of people, if you think about it, I think I want to share the food, because I'd rather live and share than die alone, you know, die with the other person. So just something to think about.
But I would just add to that, I just, the items that you had mentioned, but you think about the new requirements that we have in regards to implementing the statewide curriculum, teacher evaluation, and there are so many things that cost money to implement. We just had a new third-grade reading bill that was passed, just within the last two weeks. There are a lot of requirements in that third-grade reading bill that we are all going to have to implement, and yet they haven't allocated any resources for that yet. That's just one example of what's happened over time as it relates, not just the items you mentioned, but the requirements that we have to meet for kids.
Hi, thank you for being here when you don't feel as well as you usually do.
I actually feel pretty good, I just don't sound right.
You sound really good, too. So I'd like to thank all the parents who showed up, take time away from your kids' hacking and all their busy schedules, and the teachers who spent time, and administrators, I know there's a ton of us here, appreciate everybody's willingness to be invested in our community. But this morning, Andrea Oquest was speaking to our staff, and you made a really important point that I think I would like you to reiterate, if you can, in front of the people here, about Detroit Public Schools in particular, and how they've restructured, and how that funding will go to one of those two entities.
Yeah, so, you know, one of the things that we were looking at with the largest school system in the entire state of Michigan, is the fact that Detroit was, we weren't sure if Detroit was even going to survive over this past year. And we can talk about a lot of things and a lot of perceptions that we have, and a lot of things that we think we know about, but any school district that went from one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand kids down to fifty-thousand kids in a short period of time would not survive. It's just not, it's just not anybody's perception of what they think might be happening in Detroit as it relates to the operation of those particular schools. No district would be able to survive that kind of change in their student population, as Bill mentioned, and still be able to run school. I mean, it's just, it really is that simple. And so they had to restructure. When you think about it, they had five emergency managers that had all-knowing powers. They really can, they could do anything that they wanted when they were in charge of the DPS system in the last seven years, and every emergency manager that left, left a bigger deficit than when they started. How did that happen? These people had, these are smart people. They took people from General Motors to run the place, they took people from Oakland, California, to come in who are experts in municipal funding, to run the place. Every emergency manager left a bigger deficit than they started with. And so there was a structural problem with the way schools are funded, and if you're in that, and we're all feeling that structural problem out here in western Wayne County, it's just not quite as significant as it is in some of our urban areas, but they basically were pushed into not being able to survive through that process, but they've now been restructured. So they have a new startup, and they're now set up to service fifty thousand kids instead of one-hundred-and-twenty thousand kids. They've closed over a hundred schools in the last seven years. Here's a statistic for you, it blew me away when I heard this. In the last seven years, between charter schools opening and Detroit schools closing, they have turned over eighty percent of their schools in seven years. Eighty percent of their schools have turned over. Eighty percent of their schools either are new or are gone in the last seven years. I heard the mayor of Detroit speak on this, and he looked at legislators, and he said, "Would you allow that to happen in your school district?" And so whatever perceptions you might have, the line is they were put in an untenable situation that they were never going to survive. They now have an opportunity to continue, and I can assure you, just as it is for every one of our school districts out here, the additional funds that they'll receive from this are gonna provide them the opportunity to be successful with their kids moving forward.
As the adequacy study continues through the next year, over here, round two, your mic.
I leave it, that was supposed to be a different meeting tonight, probably. Yes, we were.
As the adequacy study continues an extra year because of the Calog Foundation, will there be a portion of it that looks at the efficiency of running center programs versus inclusionary practices within districts?
I mean, I don't know if they're gonna get that specific, but I do know one of the real shortfalls that they felt with the adequacy study that was done was that it did not analyze special education programs and costs. So I can't speak too specifically if they're gonna look that close in regards to program setup, program configuration, but I do know they're gonna look very closely at what the cost is for special education programs and how that's impacting both the students who have special needs and the general fund students who have resources allocated to make sure that those programs are running. So, but I can't answer the question if they're gonna look specifically at that. If you send me a note, I can make sure that the committee, Steve and I are on the committee, we can make sure to get that question to the committee as they're starting to look at this.
I'll absolutely send you now.
One partner will stand.
Hi, Beth. Hi, thank you so much for speaking this evening, and something that was said earlier really resonated with me and kind of hit to my core, which is, the schools are a magnet for a community, and sometimes they are actually the identity of a community. And as a parent in the Plymouth Canton District with three young children who are going to be plagued by this funding crisis for their educational careers, what I'm finding is that I think our communities in those, especially in those communities that have had good schools, great schools for a very long time, is the general feeling in the community is that the schools have always been good, and they're going to continue to always be good, and that certainly we will find a way, and come heck or high water, it won't be through Wayne County, we'll figure it out locally. So I just want to make sure that everyone here in the room and everyone that takes this information they hear tonight back to their own communities. Can you please clarify, if we wanted to do something locally, only in Plymouth Canton, only in Livonia, only in Wayne Westland, is that a possibility, or is this our only option for our children?
Yes, this is the only way to generate any other operating funds to make name to programs and services that are operating in your schools. There is no other game in town, period.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it. Andrea, you want to bring us home in this wonderful, beautiful facility that you guys built? Oh, my gosh.
So we appreciate you staying over, we know we kept you a bit, but I think we learned a great deal from these folks, so one more round of applause for our three experts here this evening. I'd like to thank my fellow superintendents again, Michelle Harmel, Monica Merritt, and Pete Kulak, for their commitment to bringing this town hall together. And most of all, I'd like to thank you, I'd like to thank you for caring about our kids, caring about our schools, and caring about our community. Keep advocating, keep this close to you, and we appreciate you being here this evening. Have a great night.